Period, so could you give us the number of months under which that 24 wedding events would be held? How many months so we could that determine? Because I think in the second page you talk about there'd be only so much, assuming 24 weddings per year, but you did, you made it clear in the last session that there was only, you know, there was a finite period of time like April to September or something like that. But I didn't, I didn't keep my books, so I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, in response to your first question, just a point of clarity. When we had the contract service before, it was not for catering. Basically, what the contract provider did was they, they did what Townes-Stacke previously did, which is really book the events, show the property, work, work the events in terms of setting up and tearing down and cleaning up of the events. And the vendor we had was, their fee was 50% of the revenue that the town generated. With regards to the, to the number of weddings per year that was in the report, all we did, and irregardless of some previous analysis where we, you know, tried to fine tune and anticipate, this is just based on historical information, because that's really the only, you know, factual information that we have. And so what we tried to do with this report is just really base, you know, everything from the number and projection wise, based on, on historical.
So, and the, the previous contractor staff was, they had a guaranteed minimum, whether or not there was any activity. They got $6,000 a month, whether you, so we had $96,000 right off the bat before we made a penny.
We, yeah, we had to do that because we had decided that the weddings were going to cease at a certain month. I believe it was, there would be no more weddings after January 1st. So with no longer having any future of bidding weddings or working weddings, there was a period of time there where we had to pay a contractor to just come in and mop up the end of the season for us. And that's, that's why we had to pay them that, that fee to, to run the rest of the events.
My understanding is we paid the fee from the get-go.
That's not.
Maybe I misunderstood, but okay.
That's not correct.
But, so how many, with weddings, what, what is the period of time you're anticipating month to month to that these 24 weddings would be expected?
We weren't anticipating any month to month. Again, this is based on historical information. And so what that means is that if, if you were to direct us to move forward, given that we went, you know, at, at the earliest, we went and accepted wedding until July 1st, calendar year 2013 would not be a good gauge as far as these numbers. Because again, these numbers are based on historical information of what the town typically experienced. And so we would have to hit the fee for a full year, which, which in this case would be calendar year 2014.
Okay, I'll save my other comments for later. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Any other comments or questions for staff right now?
Just to kind of echo Mike there, this is an annualized cost. It's not a term cost or July to March cost, it's just an annualized cost of approximately 24 weddings.
Both, both revenue and costs are based on an annual basis, because we have no way of guessing how many weddings.
No, I, I realize it said that, but, but at the last time when we discussed this, I think it was Steve said that, you know, the average period of time is, it's seasonal and it's from this time to this time. So one could assume, and I just didn't remember what the, this time to this time is. So if you can think about it, I'd like to know, because that then determines how many weddings we would have during the month. And, you know, we talked about sometime that there were sometimes two weddings in a day, four weddings in a weekend, you know, essentially, and that's been one of the concerns is, is that the weddings take up the park and the citizens who have the weekend off can't enjoy their park that they pay for.
Your concern is impact versus cost and stuff.
Well, that's what it's always been.
Correct.
So are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for all comments. Councilmember Dobbie.
Yes. Well, first of all, I don't really know why this had an agenda item. Did you just wake up some, one morning, George, and decide to put this on the agenda? I mean, why is it, the council has discussed this several times and it came to a decision. Why is it now back on the agenda? That's my first question.
It was a discussion of the council at a prior meeting that we looked at this issue.
I think we weren't here.
Well, I don't know. But anyway, I'm extremely, I pushed hard some time ago to stop weddings in the park for the following reasons. The weddings are not for Atherton residents. When you look at the past information, you find that virtually all of the weddings were for non-Atherton residents. Once in a while, because we gave Atherton residents a break, people came in and they asked somebody in Atherton to get them a deal for their wedding, but they weren't for Atherton. So they're not for Atherton residents. And the financial analysis, we've done many, many times, it comes up different almost every time we do it, but what mine is, it certainly doesn't compare, it doesn't compare with the other revenue sources that we're talking about. Now, most weddings are on weekends, when many residents and others have time to enjoy the undisturbed serenity of the park with their families. So we're actually punishing people who use the park at the weekends by allowing these weddings to take place. The weddings fill up the majority of available parking places that should be available for people and their families to use. The same council members who opposed the library in the park because of concerns of increased traffic are now supporting events that will bring in more traffic and at times that have most, the most negative effects on residents. I am totally opposed to weddings in the park.
Any other members of the council wish to speak?
Vice Mayor Carlson. Yes. I'm for turning on weddings to the park. However, I don't think that there ought to be more than one wedding or major event a day. I think looking to major events, particularly on weekend days is, really does run into a problem as far as other users being able to enjoy the park. Using a third party to manage the process, absolutely. And splitting, splitting the event charge 50/50 sounds like a pretty reasonable way to go. I think that the pricing of wedding events should be aggressive at the higher end of the scale compared to other, other venues that might be considered as, as being prime sites as well. I think that adding a town administrative fee to recover the incremental cost of keeping and good repair makes all kinds of sense. But that shouldn't be split, should not be split with a third party manager. Should pass directly to town, not shared. I think requiring valet parking for weddings and large private events to allow other users space to park is very recommended, makes all kinds of sense. And I don't think we ought to spend money on, on special plantings and annuals, as was done in the past, to try to beautify the grounds. I think that printing those plantings, fine. And if the event organizers want to bring in their own plants or flowers to decorate the site temporarily, fine, as long as they take care of it afterwards. And I think that what we do here in weddings, we also ought to apply to pricing of corporation meetings and those kinds of large events that the fees ought to be more on the aggressive side and valet parking and that type of thing.
Councilmember Leest.
I'm in favor of weddings in the park. Sorry, gentlemen.
Of course.
I think that by doing this in a professional way, by having someone that treats this as a profession, as a commodity, and with respect to our residents, and we have to be a little bit more, we have to be a little bit more concerned about what the impact is to the neighbors. And I think that by, step number one, clearly by having the contract that we get into with people that do want to utilize this for an event, by valeting them from available parking to reduce the impact to the park will increase the park's ability to have multiple users at the same time. And again, I think that utilization with the town's website is going to be an important factor. I think that the outsourcing point with the personnel who we choose to hire is going to be key. And I think that the other thing that we haven't done is we haven't kept, let's say, a more direct oversight. And it should be something that for the first year, first few years, it comes back to council, it comes back as a consent item so that we can talk and ask about it as we previously discussed on other items, just to keep us updated. Because it's something that, you know, if we have to adjust, we can adjust from here to you and trickle downward. And we also are going to be listening to residents with their concerns. So, you know, I think that's, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Sure, I've got a few comments to make.
Take your time.
Okay, I won't talk to you. I got until midnight to get my breath.
Good.
Okay, so anyway, I got several comments. First off, you know, I think that the, on an overall basis, so I'll break my comments up into two pieces. On an overall basis, the park is, is the residence. And I think that the park, we need to go to great extent to make sure that the park is reserved for the residents to use when they want to use it or they have time to use it. And as Councilmember Dobbie pointed out, and I said also earlier, that's normally on the weekend. I'm not against having activities in, in the park. For me, the big issue is, is access to the park and the size of those activities. And this is what we talked about before, when we said, you know, when we first had stopped all activities in the park and we said, hey, we think that that's kind of a mistake, let's go back. And then, you know, at that time, the discussion was, it's not the activities, it's the size of the activities. And it's the noise that is generated from the activities. So weddings off unfortunately, as well as like major Google events, take up all the parking and take up, you know, and, and use up the whole, the whole park and residents really can't use it. And that's the issue. The residents are paying for the park, we pay for the update, we would like to use the park when we want to. We've got set activities that are set there, such as the Little League, and there's going to be a heck of a lot of construction and noise going on with regards to the new, you know, reviewing stands and things like that. And there are other sports that want to get in there. So I think that we need to consider those things and make sure that the park is available for them. I don't have a problem if, if we think that we need to bring in some contract help to help us manage the park. My only question is the same as what we brought up on the budget. Somebody's doing that today, and if in fact, we're going to take it away from somebody who's doing it today, then what are they doing to be doing with their extra time? And do we, or do we need to keep them here for full time or put them on some sort of a part-time basis? So in many cases, you know, and this happens in organizations in private industry as well as, as in public areas. You know, we break somebody free, he says, oh yeah, we're going to outsource this thing, but the, but no, there's no headcount change, so the costs actually go up. So I think that we need to look at that. And I, I did question when I read here, it said we need to have somebody take over all of the events and take care of all that. And so, and I, and I think for doing that, I know we had somebody that was managing the park, they weren't, they weren't fully engaged. And I think the balance of pay, money we're paying, the 50%, it says 50 to 60%, you've conservatively put in the 50% in the spreadsheet, $125,000 I think is pretty high for having somebody occasionally give a tour or talk to people and, and keep a booking calendar. It's not that hard. So I think that that is over the top. If in fact, the decision of the council is to allow some sort of weddings, again, the size needs to be defined and, and the timing. You know, two per month, one per, one per Saturday, if in fact, we're going to go do that. And, and I think then we have to go look at the, the amount of money that we're spending on there. But size limitations, and if we're going to do something like that for any event, we talked about we needed a schedule. In fact, we never ended up getting our schedule back when we first looked about putting activities back in the park. That still is an outstanding action item and it is from, it's from several months ago. Actually, it's quarters ago. But size limitations are key. Atherton resident discounts. Our city attorney has said that yes, we can set up a pricing structure that if you're a resident, you get a, you pay one fee, if you're a non-resident, you pay another fee. That needs to be done. And, and again, we need to make sure that we're limiting things and we have a consolidated calendar so that we don't have something planned when say, there's a Little League playoff game, because all the parking places are taken up then and there's no parking. So, so again, you know, I feel that we should keep the park for ourselves. I do have some concerns about the, you know, the use of the residents. But if, if the whole council does vote for this, to have weddings, that we do put size limitations on, we do have the discount structure, we take a hard look at how we're going to outsource this and what the fees are, and if in fact, we are taking fees that are currently being done in-house and, and giving them to an outside person, then I'd like to really understand, you know, kind of a bottoms-up, zero-based budgeting, what we're doing with those people. It may be there's other work for them to do, I don't know, but we need to make sure that we're, we're not outsourcing work so that we can create other jobs. Thank you.
So I have a quick question for our city attorney and maybe our planner. It's my understanding that our park is not specifically and wholly dedicated for Atherton residents. It's an open park? Was that part of the will, that it is open to the public? It's not just dedicated to Atherton residents?
Well, it's open to the public.
Open to the public.
Regardless of why. I mean, it's open to the public for a lot of reasons, including the fact that over the years, we've taken money from Cal, the state of California and others to develop and do things in the park and strings attached to that, or it cannot be, you know, parochial to the, to the local residents only. And just, so it's clear, on top of what Councilman Whitmer said is absolutely correct. In, in January, my notes indicate, and I saved them, that there was, that was indicated the council voted 4-0 with Councilmember Dobbie absent, which is why he didn't realize this happened. But they indicated that weddings and other things would be permitted, pricing plan for local preference was included, and that the staff was directed to come back with a park revenue and cost accounting. And that's why we're here today.
Okay. I know that we're very conscious about our revenue and costs, and we want to have the park be financially self-sustaining. However, I honestly believe that the park is an amenity to our residents and it is our responsibility to maintain it and keep it as an amenity to our residents and to the public. And if we can make money or make some money to help defer some of the costs of running it, I think that's good. I don't think that it has to be the gating issue to actually turn a profit. I think that if we even turn a $10,000 a year profit and can have weddings at the park and other events that we had arbitrarily and without council decision stopped in 2011, I think that we should do that. Limitations, when it first became discussed that there was a big parking issue, I think that we can mitigate that parking issue by having valet parking. I think Councilmember Leest had an excellent suggestion that had never been looked at before. Many changes in the way we run our park have been made since 2011, when we had dedicated employees and dedicated staff managing the park. Hiring outside vendor, a professional event coordinator who understands how to market to the, the events and the wedding planners. And charging a premium to be married in the jewel of Atherton, Atherton, Holbrook Palmer Park, I think is the way we should go. The, the noise, the non-resident use, I think that's not an issue. I think that's small-minded and not, not accepting and managing our resource the way we should, we should be managing it to be welcoming to other members of our community. We're hosting a Easter egg, annual Easter egg event where the dames is hosting now on April, on March 30th. And the numbers of people that come from all over, not just Atherton residents, and they come every year with their children, it's far and away the majority of non-residents who come to the park to participate in this wonderful event. So I don't think that we should say because they're a non-resident, that they should not be able to hold a wedding or an event in the park. That's my, that's my feeling. I would like to bring it back and call for a motion to provide staff some more direction about initiating the reopening of the weddings at Holbrook Palmer Park under some guidelines that we've discussed, such as maybe the premium pricing, working, fleshing out the, how we would handle the event coordinator and hiring and a very, very professional event coordinator and with the parking valet in mind too. So, any other additions to that? Councilmember Carlson.
Well, I'm just going to ask, do we really need a motion here? I mean, you've heard the, the inputs and so forth, so what, what were you looking for?
No, I think we, I can, I can count. I've got a consensus of the, the council at least to come back with, you know, the, as Mike indicated, the, the selection process for a potential vendor and as well as a facility use policy that's mentioned in the staff support that would govern our event restrictions, valet parking, days of the week, number of weddings, cost of weddings, but another descriptive language before weddings could even be started. Will you bring that back to the council for their formal approval?
Okay. So we're finished with that then? So we have to go back to item number 13 that was pulled from the consent calendar? Councilmember Dobbie pulled that and as well as Vice Mayor Carlson. Okay, who's going to go first?
Question first?
Okay.
Mike, just wanted to follow up with George. Were we able to get ahold of Norton Devlin to find out?
Yes, I had, and I had spoken to Malcolm months before and I spoke to him again today. And he was, you know, gave me the same answer. He's, he's talked to, I believe it was the, the chair of the arts committee, and he's comfortable with their disbandment, as is noted in the staff report here, he's supportive of it as she was, provided that, that the arts committee become one of those designated groups like the dames or the others and their continued ability to use the town's facilities in that manner.
Thank you. That was my question. Please, you all have spoken up.
Good. Councilmember Mike.
Well, I just wanted more information on this. When I read this, it looked as if one of the reasons for separating this committee was because of the Brown Act problems. But why are they any different from any other committee?
Money. They're the only committee that had, that sponsors an event that they then enter. And because of that, they, it creates very large Brown Act problems. Because essentially, they sponsor an event in the park for artists. And guess who happens to be on this committee are a bunch of artists. And so they want to, it helps in, in, I guess, figuring out what kind of a project would be appreciated by artists. But basically, what it is, is they sell their work there. And the problem is, it's sponsored by the town, we pay for it out of taxpayers' money, and they're voting on something that benefits themselves. So they're all, well, I think it was six of 10 were automatically disqualified from voting immediately, which was more than a quorum. So then we have to start bringing back one at a time until we have a quorum to vote on it because of that. And they have not been doing that in the past. They've been violating the Brown Act, in my opinion. So the, the, I think incredibly constructive and imaginative solution to this was to make it a non-city committee and let them continue to advise, essentially as advisor to the foundation.
Are we going to continue to budget for the arts committee?
Not for the arts committee, but, but the money basically is essentially, will be budgeted for foundation use.
Trust, trust. I mean, are they trying to still get council money?
It's the trust, the Evans Trust.
They're going to.
They're going to.
They're not really a general fund money.
We have the Evans, we have the Evans trust money, it's not taxpayer money. It's Evans trust money that goes to this.
Okay, so you're just going to give me money?
They have to come in.
They have to, like anybody else, they have to present, like any other outside entity, they have to come in and present a plan for what they want to use the money for, and then you have to approve it.
You would, you would see their annual programmatic costs.
Yeah.
And they'd ask for a funding request of 15,000 or 10,000, whatever it is for the year. And we would see that before we budget for this particular fiscal year, come April or May. They'd present that to the council, council would then say, yes, we'll support you to 8,000 or 10,000 or the entire amount, and we would budget for that.
Okay, that's all I have.
So do we have a copy of the, of the Evans trust? Because I think when we first came, brought this up, when you brought up the new committees, I think I said I'd like to see the, the trust comment. Because I think originally, if I remember right, the, the Reed Corporate Trust is, was established and given to the dames to run an art program, so.
No, that's not correct. And, and this gets really confused because what, it originally was presented to the town to create a quote "art house." And then, subsequent to that, after Mrs. Evans died, there was a lawsuit that was filed and it involved a number of family members and other people, you know, because they, they all got real interested in her money once it was given away. And so the resolution of that was a court order that said, some of the money goes to pay off the family members and then the corpus, the rest of the trust money came to the town of Atherton to be used essentially for the art projects that she wanted to be carried out in the art house. We didn't have to buy a house and keep it as a, you know, some kind of a structure. All we're, we're required to do now under the trust is to keep this money and use it only for art, art projects essentially.
And would the committee then, could the committee actually end up becoming staffed 100% with just Menlo Park people? Or do they have to be Atherton people? Is there a provision?
Part of me thinks, well, no, it has to be staffed with a bunch of art people, but it's a foundation like any other. So, you know, this theoretically wouldn't be the only money that the foundation was out securing and using. Basically, this is a, not a whole lot different than the, the concept of having the arts committee. The only difference is the council still controls the trust money, but you just control it to an outside entity that then had, once you give them the money, they, they don't have an interest in it anymore. And so they're not bound by the Brown Act or any other.
No, I understand that aspect, but the arts committee, I think right now on our form is you have to, to apply to be on a committee, you have to be an Atherton resident.
Yeah, it would then become their own entity, their own organization. And then if the town, if they morphed into something else and they came to the town for their annual budget request and the town's, we're not going to contribute to this now Menlo Park organization, you can choose not to do so.
You can, it's your, it's your trust fund, you can give those funds to whomever you think best carries out the goals of the trust essentially. think best carries out the goals of the trust, essentially, because you're holding the money in trust for her. So it's not like it's, you can't just, you know, give it to someone to play rugby or something like that, it has to be art.
And in fact, the dames could actually come to the town council and say, we want to develop a kids' art program in town, and you could contribute some other fund to the dames to run that sort of program.
And the dames is not 100% Atherton residents. They have other residents from all over the fair.
But they're not a committee today?
No.
That requires Atherton residents.
Right.
And asking to spin off, that's the difference.
So the council, in essence, is the executor of the trust?
I would like to consider you more the trustee.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same concept. You, you are carrying out the decedent's wishes through the trust.
So when the trust account is depleted, the town won't have any other obligation, or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, theoretically, once it's gone, it's gone.
Now, in terms of their spending the money, do they have to adhere at all to a purchasing, a purchasing policy or anything?
No, they wouldn't. Again, they're coming to you with a programmatic event schedule for the year, you decide how much you want to contribute toward that event, and once you give them the money to do that, it's their money at that point, so long as they abide by those events.
Similar to what they're doing now.
So they're, they're like a, no, they're, they have to abide by the purchasing.
And say they got to abide by the purchasing policy.
So they're like the, would be like the dames or ACIL as far as the designated committee, and the town be charging only the town's direct costs for the use of facilities on it?
Correct.
Okay? So the garden room will no longer be reserved only for the use of the Arts Committee?
Correct.
Storage space, office space, they don't require any storage space or office space?
I don't know what their current needs are. Do they have any storage?
Well, they have the entire art room in the bottom floor of the main house.
Well, we can certainly, you know, allocate, because the dames have space and others as a designated.
Well, it has to be addressed, I think, in the park master plan, the storage type things and for these town designated committees is to, you know, it, I'm not advocating anything here when I say it costs us some money to provide these things to these organizations, and maybe that's what we want to do, is continue to do that, but there's maintenance and cleaning, and these types of things should be addressed in the, for the designated committees in the park master plan.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have one question to follow up to Jerry's comment. Do they understand all of the details, so to speak, of this request? I know that when I spoke to a couple of people on the Arts Committee, they originally said, well, this wasn't our idea, this was your idea, city manager, and, but, but then they said, oh yeah, well, maybe that's a good idea. I'm not sure that they've actually thought through everything, and like, for example, Jerry's comment of, do they understand that they're not going to get exclusive use, or that they're going to have to pay for it now, it's going to have to come out of their budget? And, you know, is there a full understanding of this is what happens when you get spun off?
I'm trying to express that, Joe, but to Jerry's comment about the garden room, that's storage that they're using, right?
More of a studio.
Exhibit, no, that's exclusive for their use, I think.
It's exclusive to their use.
And that's what I'm questioning, as to whether we allow that to continue.
We probably would. I misspoke, because we allow that as a designated group, we allow the dames some facility space, we allow the foundations some facility space. So if they have facility space that they're already using exclusively, we'd probably allow that to continue as a designated group, just like the others. That's kind of what I intimated to them when I said, when I said nothing was really going to change, except for the money component, the budgeting component, and you'd be a designated group.
Well, you know, it would be, it would be good. I mean, there may be good benefits to do this, or not, but to me, all the detail things, before we make a final decision, you know, I think it might be prudent for us to say, we've thought through this, kind of in a working group, and maybe staff gets together with them, and they say, okay, have you thought about this, have you thought about that? We get it all written down, so there's no mistake, and there's no, hey, wait a second, this is what we thought. And we could throw in, like, hey, you know, you can't ever deny an Atherton resident, I don't know if you want to do that, but maybe we would, a resident member or whatever, but, you know, my, my concern would be, first off, they understand what they're getting into before we make a final decision. Secondly, then they come and they represent what they want, and I'm not trying to delay it, but I do think it would be prudent.
Well, I mean, we're just one of them, I met with all.
I just want to say that I think that it is imprudent for the, for us as a council to continue to let them operate the way that they've been operating, because they've been violating the Brown Act, and they are liable to be called on that, and it's, it's, it's dangerous situation at this time.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was going to point out to Councilmember Whitmer, I don't think they understand what they were supposed to be doing in the past. In fact, they weren't following their charter at all. They were basically handling their own money, and when they had a staff member that was assigned to them, they would say, okay, we want to buy a case of wine, and she'd say, okay, go fill out a purchase order of some kind and go buy a case of wine, and nobody was checking it, no, they could have been buying it from their, from their son or daughter or whatever. And so, you know, basically, from a legal perspective, I have to tell you, this, this may be a very good win-win, where the foundation, I mean, they don't even pay prevailing wage rates if they were to place a major sculpture in the park where we would. Things like that become kind of subtle benefits from doing something like this, and it takes the scrutiny and the worry of staff having to hand-hold a very difficult problem now, because quite frankly, they've gotten used to certain ways of doing things over time, where we had staff that wasn't adequately supervising them. And so now it's really hard for them to come in and have the referee show up and blow the whistle and say, timeout, you can't do that. And so I think this is kind of, even from their perspective, this might be a better system than the one they were going to have to function under.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that. And again, I'm not trying to belabor the point, but I think that if you would please make sure that they understand, and you have like a working session, and you make sure it's detailed out what they're getting, what they're not getting, I mean, we can, we can say, you know, given the fact that it's no different than it is today, and it's going to cost us less and take away a problem, we can probably agree it tonight, but, but before-